Thank you everyone for coming today. Today's town hall for SC 48B and SC 49. Senator Swazinski and Representatives Pryor, Cortizo Watoon, and Marie. My name is Reagan Green and Senator Swazinski's committee legislative assistant and I will be your moderator for this event. We hope to have a respectful discussion about issues that are important to you, your family, and our community. Before we begin, there's a few items of business that I'd like to go over. To ensure that the legislators are able to answer and discuss as many topics as possible, I will be reading from both pre-submitted questions and questions filled out on the cards today in the back. There are also additional agendas in the back if anyone would like to grab one. For submitting questions on note cards, please include with your question your name, address, and any other contact information that you would like to provide so that your representatives are able to follow up with you after today if needed. We will begin with a brief introduction from our speakers, followed by a question and answer period, and then the participating speakers will give their closing statements. I will turn it over to our first speaker this afternoon, Representative Lucy Green.
Good morning and thank you all for coming here. Hopefully you can hear me okay. Can you hear me now? Yeah. So I am Lucy Green. I've lived in San Francisco for the past five years. I served on the city council here, was elected to state representative and general member with 417 votes. So realizing this is a very comfortable district, which is great to see people here. This is the first time we've had a town hall, I think, for the district of Chaska Chan that I can remember. The last time I was here was right before the pandemic hit and we had a climate event here in the city into action, a climate event. But yeah, great to see everyone here. Sorry that we don't have more space. We have difficulty trying to find a room that way to accommodate everyone, but we are live streaming this, so people can watch from home. So I have been in the House since January 3rd and I serve on four committees. I serve on the agricultural finance committee, the education finance committee, the climate and energy finance and policy committee, and sustainable infrastructure. And I'm looking forward to having this discussion with all of you and I will pass it on to our next representative. Thank you all for coming.
Great. Thank you Lucy. Thank you for hosting us and it's exciting to be here again in person with everybody and I know that there's people here with all sorts of views and the whole spectrum, I think, of what we think of as our political process right now. And I think I give us all credit and that we can all have a moment of saying like, this is kind of nice. Not just to be sitting with people that agree with you, but to sit and talk to someone that doesn't agree with you too. And to be in the same group and to be able to do it in a civil and basically a democratic way. So I appreciate Lucy hosting us and her district and I appreciate my colleagues before all of us that are glad that we're here with us to do this together. Because where we are in this process is we've been working pretty intensely with our committees and Lucy talked about her committees. I'm in the policy as the chair of that committee. I'm on the financial finance and I'm also on the financial policy committee. So that's right now I've been working in those areas and that's kind of my area of expertise. I care about what's going on in the other committees, but I don't always know all the details. And so that's what's nice about bringing us from our two different bodies, different community experiences. We've been doing the work and now we're bringing the work forward, getting feedback from folks, getting their reactions, even now refining and looking at what our priorities should be before we get to the end of session in this big budget year. So this is a good opportunity to pause, to hear from folks, to be part of the process and to be able to be part of the process in person as well, virtually as we live streaming this and that people might be hearing in the future. So a very grateful meeting and really appreciate that we're able to appreciate that we're taking the time to watch from home right now, either now in the moment or sometime in the future. Thanks all.
So I'm not going to use my, I taught for 33 years and so when you have seniors in May of the senior year, you have to do something to keep them engaged, right? So I would tell jokes and then use my inside voice and so anyways, with that, or my outside voice, which voice would I have used? Outside voice. Inside, I would use anyway.
The teacher voice.
My teacher voice. So thank you for, you warmed my heart walking up. If you heard me start the analogy with It's a Wonderful Life, seeing so many of you here. I really, I know we had 160 people sign up and I wasn't, and this room only holds 100 and I was like, well, people, it's, you know, they sign up and they won't, and then to walk up and see so many people, it's been really, it's been hard the last three years to get people back into civic engagement and having a sense of political efficacy. So thank you all for engaging with us today. I'll be here until the last person's gone. I don't have little kids to get to at home and so anyways, with that said, I'm Steve Swazinski. This was my home turf for 25 years. I can remember when the library was in that building and it was about the size of this space here. And when they opened up this library, I was ecstatic. All of my kids were like of that perfect, taking the kids to every library program. I can remember taking them to Kitten Kaboodle and Jim the Magician and all these wonderful things that public libraries offer. And I loved that Eden Prairie had this place for taking our children to be intellectually stimulated and learn the love of books. And so I'm on the education committee, on policy, I'm the chair, like Lori is in the House, I'm on the education finance committee, I'm on elections, and I'm stating the local government veterans. And I'm the luckiest person in the Minnesota Senate because I love, sincerely love every single committee I'm on because it's just so intellectually engaging to be on these four committees. So anyways, I taught at Eden Prairie High School for 33 years. I lived about a mile that way for 25 years till we decided to downsize and what else? Anyways, looking forward to today and oh, and I spent my first six years in the minority and now the last seven months in the majority. And I hope that every politician gets to experience being in the minority in the majority. Being in the minority makes you more humble, makes you more, I think it makes you a better politician, quite frankly. And now that I'm in the majority, it's just, Representative Cortizo Watoon turned me on to the word of the year for me. It's called EU stress. I never really told me about this. Because I'm telling her, oh my God, it's so overwhelming, it's so wonderful, it's every day I'm like, I'm climbing a mountain and all this information, all this knowledge and all this wisdom I'm gaining and I'm loving every minute of it. Like, we adjourned last night at 2:40 a.m. So I didn't get home until, and I couldn't remember what we did until I read my morning paper. So, and I'm telling Carly about how stressed out I am, but stress has its negative connotation. And so I was explaining that point and she goes, well, you're having EU stress. E-U stress. And if you look it up or Google it, it means positive productive stress. And so that's what I'm feeling this year. A lot of it's because of you people here, so thank you.
Does this work? I hate following Senator Swazinski. I don't know why I always say that. I'm Representative Carly Cortizo Watoon. I represent 49B. I used to be 48B until the redistricting and now that Lucy has the budget of representing 49B, so it's a great pleasure to cover and glad that you're here with us today and hosting. Thank you. I wanted to just cover a couple of things before I go into my introduction. Again, we are overwhelmed. We're completely overwhelmed and hoping you are here today and those who opted to stay home in the rain and are watching online, we appreciate it. This is our second in-person slash hybrid town hall that we've been able to do since the start of COVID. Representative Pryor, Senator Swazinski, and I have done over 12 town halls and now we're really excited to have our representative reappear in the mix with us. So that being said, we do have time to go and some of the love you have seen today since we got started a little bit late, so we will be able to cover hopefully what we plan to cover today. So I appreciate your patience. And then I also just wanted to say, you know, for those of you who are here, it's our overwhelming response has been civil and respectful dialogue with all of our constituents. So that's what we're expecting and anticipating today. If there's anyone who is having trouble remaining civil and respectful and you will be asked to leave, if you can't do that, we might have to terminate the town hall and early and try again next time. There's folks outside who are carrying out their First Amendment rights. That is wonderful. We're going to talk through a lot of stuff today. Some of our topics are a little bit more contentious than others and that's okay, but we're really glad that you're here and we just want to make sure that everybody feels safe and respected in this space. So that being said, I am Representative Cortizo Watoon. I am in my third term in the Minnesota House. I'm the vice chair of the Commerce Committee. It's my third term on Commerce. I'm serving on the Children's Families Committee, which used to be the Early Childhood Finance and Policy Committee, so it's my third term on that committee as well. I serve on Human Services Finance with Representative Pryor and I also serve on the Economic Development Finance and Policy Committee. So covering a lot of bases, I've had a lot of fun and we're just going to kick it off. I'm jumping to some of the pre-submitted questions. As you can see, there's a lot of folks here. If you guys have submitted questions, we're going to do our best to get through what's been pre-submitted and just go as quickly as we can. Hopefully we'll be able to follow up, gather your contact information, the questions that you submitted after the fact if we need to, individually.
All right. Thank you everyone. So we're just going to jump in. Like I said earlier, we're going to go like subject by subject from both questions of our pre-submitted questions and then at the end we'll get these more specific questions. So we're going to begin today talking about social security tax elimination. So what is the status of eliminating the tax on social security benefits and do you support it?
So I've, somehow I got selected for the social security question. I got selected for social security and it might have something to do with my age. And so yeah, I haven't started collecting social security yet, but I think next year I will. I'll be eligible and kind of look at the dynamics of when it makes sense for people to start collecting social security by now. And I think that that's the decision that I'm making. So I do understand about paying taxes on social security because that's what I'm anticipating that I will be doing in the future. We have a number of bills right now that are still under consideration about the social security tax and we haven't gotten to the end point yet of what we're going to do. So, and that's it. It's the collective. It's the House, the Senate, the governor that have to come together and decide something specific to this. But I do feel confident between, because I think there's going to be a change in social security. And that's something I'm really remembering. If I'm a senator, I was, this is actually my first term, so I started at the same time and even in that term, we started eliminating greater and greater number of people from paying social security. But in Minnesota, we keep coming back to progressive taxation. So those that are most able to pay are the ones that pay, you know, have paid for your share of taxes in terms of the population. Those can afford it. So, you know, I think of my history, again, my age, when I was a parent with two young kids and we were living just online, my husband was a student, my income was not very high. We had two kids. We paid proportionately a lot in taxes. So, you know, as an absolute amount, it's not nearly as much as we pay in taxes, not my husband and I, because we have, you know, we have a good, strong income. So, but it's a healthy proportion and what you have, what you have left at that in terms of your total income. So that's a principle that we have in Minnesota is that we look for progressive taxation. And on the social security question, you know, it's going to be this big, you know, lots of people weighing in with strong opinions. The Senate probably is going to come from a different place than the House is. There'll be a conference committee, the governor weighs in. I don't know where we're going to end up. But I believe there will be, there will be a change and that we will be having, I think that we will have another group of people that will not be paying social security. My opinion personally is it's the big picture. And I'm going to follow it and see what the arguments are on both sides, where our spending priorities are. My opinion is progressive taxation and that's the principle that I tell my voters and that's the principle that I follow when I look at budgets.
Is there any other comments on social security tax elimination from our members?
I'll just say that I was on the fence. Golden Conings raises 600 million a year currently, something like that. That's a lot of money. Only the top, the bottom 52% if you will, pay no social security taxes. It's literally the top half that pays the tax. So I was kind of on the fence until people like you reached out to me and reached out to us and because your voices mattered with us. And then enough of you reached out to me and convinced me that maybe getting rid of social security taxes is the right thing to do. And that's how democracy's supposed to work. When you reach out to us and we have this balance between our constituents and our conscience. And somebody yelled out, well, that's your opinion. Well, yeah, that's what you sent us to do, to represent you. And if we just relied on your, our constituents on everything, well, then we'd just be a direct democracy and have you vote on every single issue. Well, that's impractical in a country of 20 million people. So you have to rely on us sometimes to represent you with our conscience, but nonetheless, know full well that your voice is being heard and that we understand that balance between constituency and conscience. So thank you. No, no, no. Why would I say something about my daughter?
All right. We're going to move on to talk about the budget and the surplus. So how are monies being appropriated for bills? Are there any checks and balances slash auditing to ensure the money is being used for it in time?
So I'm going to take this one. I think it's sometimes difficult for folks who aren't on the ground at the legislature to really understand how the process works, how the sausage is made. If you'd like to say that, if we were to say. I've actually made sausage at home, so I'm going to spend on that other time. But basically how the budgets targets are divided out per committee. There is a discussion amongst House leadership, there's a discussion amongst Senate leadership. This year, for the first time in a number of bienniums, we were actually able to reach joint targets for the committees on, with the House and the Senate. And the committee chairs were given that appropriation and said, okay, all the bills that you're considering, all the bills that you're hearing need to fit into this amount. This year, you know, as people are well aware, we have a very large surplus. We were not able to get hardly any spending done in the last biennium due to unfortunate decisions in the Senate. And so we have a lot of leftover money that hasn't come out. It hasn't been able to support our education system, hasn't been able to support our healthcare system, hasn't been able to support folks who need it in retirement and long-term care, et cetera, et cetera. So we were given a one-time amount of money and then an ongoing amount of money to address inflation, programs that will be continuing on out into the future. And then every chair is to decide their committee's priorities, is to hear the bills that make, that have either rolled over from a previous biennium into this current biennium that if it hadn't been passed previously. And so that's kind of where we are right now. The Senate has already started appearing, well, actually, we've heard two budget bills from our legacy committee and looking forward to higher education. So those are really amazing bills that we passed out the floor earlier this week and the Senate has been appearing to some of their budget bills too. So that's, as we move into next week, that's what we're of course going to be continuing to do, hearing the committee how the budget proposals, passing those, then they will end up going to conference committee with the bill that comes back from the Senate. So that's where we tweak everything and Representative Pryor was saying particularly when it comes to the tax budget bill, the many differences will be kind of hashed out, will come to an agreement and that's not always easy. It's certainly been challenging when we had, when we had one of the only split legislatures in the country and even though we have PFL control in the House, the Senate, and of course Governor Wal in the executive branch, it doesn't mean that we agreed on everything. So there are still things that we're going to kind of be heading in on and working through and when that conference committee agrees to a final spending plan, then that bill will go back to the House and the Senate for a final vote and then the governor will sign those bills into law. That was kind of a total overview of the budget process. I can't remember what the second part of the question was.
Are there any checks and balances slash auditing to ensure that monies need use for it?
Great. Thank you for that reminder. It is a really, really important question. So I'm thinking back to my first term, Representative Pryor and I served in the Early Childhood Finance and Policy Committee. I was actually the vice chair that year and we've heard, you know, as the public should and and as we all should as legislators, we find out maybe too late that there are bad actors in the system receiving some of our taxpayer funds. And so I take that very seriously and we need to take very specific action in terms of the childcare assistance program back when we were fighting for some waste fraud abuse in 2016, 2017, in 2017, 2018, we took immediate action on that in 2019 and we worked with DHS to put in additional checks and management throughout the process and then they reported back to us that next year. All right. So they have put the system into place and they came back to the committee and said, this is what we're doing, this is actually our new, what we've found utilizing this new process. And so we're doing that in every area of the budget and it's really, really important. Any taxpayer money that is not going to its final purpose is not acceptable. That being said, we know unfortunately in the private market, there is white collar fraud happening everywhere. There is government fraud happening on a small scale and a large scale in some places and we're doing everything that we can to address that, to make sure that your dollars are being spent efficiently and effectively.
All right. I'm going to move on just for the sake of time here. Upon the issues of transportation and infrastructure, can you explain why the governor has proposed increases in a time of the surplus? Explain the increase in transportation fees, license plates, and related items.
So thank you for that question. Thank you for that question. So yeah, that's a question we get a lot. So with that $17.6 billion surplus, which a lot of that money is money that we should have spent, you know, last year on our roads or bridges or schools and all that, but we didn't. There's one type of money that we can spend, but there's not enough money to support the transportation needs that we have. And, you know, when you look over our states, we are in the nation, we have the fifth most built-out road system in the country. So that, you know, combined with the extreme weather events that we have, the fact that we have snow, we have rain, we have everything in between, you know, are those meeting? And so transportation is one of those issues that I don't think people realize that we don't really have a funding mechanism for transportation. So people did not like the idea of having a gas tax. So the legislature looked at other creative ways to fund roads and bridges. And I know, I've had a lot of meetings with our bonding department. We have been working on the priorities of my district, 48B. I really would like to see County Road 18 built out. Right now it's a dirt road, a lot of kids use it, going back and forth to the high school. It's dangerous and we're also looking at improving Highway 5. And before we can do the work on 5, we need to make sure we have an alternate route, which is 18. So I am hopeful that we will get a lot of money to work on that. I know the county engineer has been pushing for that and hopefully we will get that done. But yeah, roads cost a lot of money. You know, I don't think we realize how much we subsidize driving a car. So when you factor in how much we spend on the plowing, the upkeep of roads, building new roads, keeping roads safe, it's a lot of money. So I am happy to work with anyone who has any good ideas for how we can finance transportation. I know Representative Horstein, he's, he has come out to our area. He really loves our microtransit here and microtransit is Southwest Prime. So it acts like Uber and if you haven't used it, but for a very small amount of money, you can get a ride from the station to your home or actually, I think they're taking people now to Edina with Southwest Prime. And a lot of people use our Southwest Transit to go to Twins games, Vikings games, sorry about the language. But transportation is a big part of our lives, so we need to figure out a way to fund it and because we are, you know, we have a lot of roads and bridges and we need to repair them. I think in the next ten years we're talking about if you don't do something now, our roads are going to look terrible and they're going to be even more dangerous. So kind of a long answer, hopefully that answers it, but yeah, thank you.
So Lucy mentioned Highway 18, that your votes are the highway?
Yes. It's a T-S-A-8.
Okay. So I, when I, when I was contacted by Carver County a couple of years ago about, you know, paving Highway 18, I'm like, no way, you know? When I walked the arboretum, it's this pastoral, you know, one country road that's unpaid. So I called the arboretum and asked them what their position was on it and they said, yeah, we want that paved. So the arboretum's on board on that. I was asked to talk a little bit about Southwest Light Rail really quick. We get your frustrations, you know, it was originally budgeted to be $1.9 million and finished by 2023 and now it's 2027 and 2.7 billion dollars and, but it's the last five stops of Southwest Light Rail are in our district. And so we care a lot to make sure this gets done right. And the audit, the last question that Carly addressed talked about audit. There was an audit of the project and there's going to be another audit of the project. We want to make sure your money is spent as wisely as possible and that there's transparency and accountability by the Met Council. So we are fully aware that you are frustrated, but know that when someday it opens, I think it's going to be a showpiece and it's going to lead to, there's already been $2 billion of economic development in our district on that side of the line because people are anticipating the stop and they're building 600 homes on, at the terminus of the light rail have been built, 600 condos and condos and things like that. And so there's just going to be more and more economic development. So when you invest money, people want to spend money, so for what that's worth.
And worth reflected too.
Yeah.
Any other comments of discussion on transportation? All right. So the bonding bill was also another subject that has been really much talked about. Is there still a possibility that a bonding will be, bonding bill would be accomplished besides the cash on the version that does not need Republican support or sort of bonding bill in general, the cash or the regular bonding bill?
Thank you. This is a really important question because simply investing in our existing state infrastructure is necessary. We want to continue having strong public education across the state. I have a couple of proposals including the bonding bill that Senators Swazinski is carrying, that Representative Pryor, Representative Green are signing onto as well. And I know you'll see a little bit about the Carver County projects that you're carrying. We haven't been able to pass the bonding bill, a comprehensive bonding bill in a few years now. And we had a tremendous amount of bipartisan support when we passed the actual bonding bill, the not the, the OG, GO, GO bonds, OG.
General obligation.
OG, original gangster, GO, general obligation. And so we had a ton of Republicans support. We have, our bonding chair has been on the committee for the last three bienniums. He was first elected with me in 2018 and was the vice chair. He's now taken it on since our previous chair has retired. And so he's been doing amazing work with the committee. He has a really great relationship with the Republican lead on the committee. I would say that this bonding bill is one of the primary examples of strong bipartisanship in the Minnesota House right now. And so I'm really, really hopeful that the senators are continuing to work together. I know that the Senate lead on the Republican side is really trying to work together. I know that the Senate lead on the Republican side is, is really trying to work with, um, their caucus to, to, to move people along because we do need a super majority to, to pass a G O bonding bill. Um, so I, I'm holding out hope. Um, and I think that, I think that's really important that we do because these are important investments for every district across the state and for Minnesota. And, um, when we can come out and show people that this is one of the ways that we're working together to support the state, um, the future of the state, no boundaries, um, counties, um, districts, et cetera, is really critical. So I'll let Representative Ream talk a little bit about projects that she has.
Thank you. So, um, so yeah, I was really happy that when we did pass the bonding down the House, we had a lot of Republican support. I know, um, after it was passed, I think we had 20 additional Republicans supported and that was thanks to the lead. Um, and you probably aren't aware of this, but we actually do work pretty well in the House. There's a lot of Republicans that work with Democrats. Um, after it passed, I, I said thank you, Representative Nash, because I know he was not being pressured not to, you know, pass it. But he said, you know, I made, I, I, I said I was going to vote for it and I did. Um, so we're hopeful that money will, um, come to Carver County. But once again, we have an issue with the Senate. So maybe Senator Switzensky can help explain, you know, how he's going to, um, bring more votes to the table. But, but I think in the House, we're doing really well. I mean, we're working together. Um, you know, not everything gets bipartisan support, but I would say a lot more than you really think. Um, it's bipartisan support in the House and I'm, I'm hopeful for the Senate. Um, but you know, we can only do so much. We can do, we can do some work with our cash, but you know, that's not a lot of our funding and we can't, we can't fund everything with this one time money. Um, we need to work together. So that's, you know, I guess one of the things that I would say about all these projects, you know, this is not a bonding year. We're doing all this bonding this year because it didn't get passed last year because we couldn't pass it in the House. Right? All right. I'm sorry, I missed that. So we real, you know, I actually met someone when I was drawing out a name and, um, he said, you don't have to mind you taxing me. And he was, we were talking in his driveway in a beautiful house. So I think he probably paid a lot of taxes. But he said, I don't mind you taxing me, but I don't, I, I want to see stuff done. I want to see Highway 5 fixed. I don't want to sit in traffic, you know? I want that money to be used to improve the roads, to improve our infrastructure, to fund our schools. We don't want to just spend that money. And every time we don't pass something, it's going to cost us more. The next time we try to build, to fix roads. So, and I, I feel like this is a question that would be really good for Senator Switzensky to answer. But we are looking to change more funding. County Road 18 is a priority for my, for me, um, Highway 5. Um, I presented bills for Chaska. They have a wonderful plan to improve their downtown area of the Marcato. And I learned the word paseo, a tissue word. So paseo is a really wide sidewalk. And they're looking at improving downtown Chaska so that people can walk down there, go to the farmer's market, they're going to have, um, an artist, um, studio area. And it sounds like it's just going to be amazing, but they need our help. Um, so for that, I want to pass it over to the senator, but I will say that we're doing all right. We're doing pretty well on passing bills. It's just a matter of getting the Senate to also understand that we need to do the work. We were called to do the work and that's what you can do.
Yeah, with respect to the Senate, with 30 seconds, uh, if our bill becomes a, does not become a law one oh one, and just the, the partisan share and both, I'm not pointing fingers at any party in particular, but we just had hard time negotiating so spirited that's on the bond. And we, both of us, both sides kind of dug in their heels. So that's kind of what we're worried about. But we'll get it done in the end because I don't, those of you that have been to our House before, my two colleagues from my right will go, but then in the Senate, and I would sit there like this. And, and so I would stop trying to stop it, but evidently not.
All right. So we're going to move on to talk about climate and environmental issues. So please share what's happening to mitigate climate change across the state.
So I'll take that. So I'm on the, um, Climate and Energy Finance and Policy Committee. And that's been a really good committee for me to be on. Um, one of my colleagues says this is very important. And we're learning all about the need to transition to clean energy. Um, in our own of this bill, we have a number of things. Um, solar, solar energy transitioning. Uh, I'm, I'm carrying a bill to put solar panels on schools. Um, we've had this before. So many schools wanted to sign up, but we didn't have the funding. So we put more funding into that so that kids can now benefit from having solar energy. You know, if power is probably, when we have these on the schools, if power's about maybe 4% of electricity in schools, that's out of time. But the kids learn about, you know, how solar energy works. Um, so they're taught about it and they also benefit from it. Um, weatherization is also a big topic in my committee. We're trying to not only, um, use cleaner energy, but also make our buildings more efficient. So that's something we talk about a lot. Um, I don't know if you've heard about heat pumps, but I was on the news. They, they caught a little clip of me talking about heat pumps because one of our representatives, um, maybe you know Patty Amon, she carried a bill for heat pumps. And I'm, I'm learning about them, but I'm really excited about heat pumps because I think this is the way that we can make our homes a lot more energy efficient. We can, um, we can sort of rely on fossil fuels. I don't know if people realize that, you know, a lot of fossil fuels that we lose in our states, they never want to stay. You know, so we need more intended by using solar and wind. Um, that would make our states a lot better. Um, the other thing is maybe people haven't seen these maps, but if you look at a map of the United States of America, they have these maps that show the wind, um, how the wind, um, passes through different parts of the country. Southwestern Minnesota, if you've driven down there, you'll see all those winter lines. Southwestern Minnesota is considered the stadia where you have wind. Because wind is, is what they call, so that's the reason why when I drive down the highway, I get to see all those winter lines. We have amazing opportunity to, to harness that energy, um, make it clean and not rely on fossil fuels. So I think it's a real win for our states to be transitioning away from fossil fuels.
Thank you. I'm going to move on just for the same time. Um, in terms of democracy and elections, could you please discuss the Democracy for the People Act and how it would change our election systems and protect voters?
Um, there's a lot in that bill. Um, but one thing that I am most proud of in the bill, won't impact a lot of people, um, that's in this room, but it automatically registers 16, 17-year-olds to vote. So that when they turn 18, they're ready for the process. And, um, and while I hope I get that kind of applause when I segue into my civics bill that I've been trying to get at for seven years, so that maybe we can register the kids why they are taking an American government class, which we don't currently require to graduate from our schools in Minnesota, along with personal finance and an ethnic studies class. Those are the three things mandated, so to speak, that the, the opposition is keeps yelling at me about, um, or yelling at us that favor that. Um, but the other thing, um, our election judges have become increasingly concerned about unruly behavior at the polls. So there's, um, more safeguards, more criminal penalties for un, um, for, um, uncivil, unpatriotic, um, uncivic engagement behavior on Election Day. So a lot of the bill deals with stuff like that. Um, but it's a good bill. We are number one in the nation. Every time I see Secretary of State Steve Simon talk, he goes, well, we have 80% voter turnout. And I always have to correct him. Actually, it's 79.96. And you don't get to round it up until it is 80%. But I hope we, with some of the, um, legislation in this bill, we can get to 80%.
I want to, um, just jump on real quick and say, so perhaps we did pass this on Thursday.
It's Thursday?
Yeah. So we said yesterday, we made it for the next week. Um, and we had, we had a good debate on the floor, um, lots of, um, lots of, uh, big comments. Um, one of the things that's also in the bill, um, the things that Senator Switzensky just said, I, we all are very, very passionate about, very glad to have been able to move forward about making easier for people to register vote. And when people register to vote, they vote. And it's getting, it's not about politicians and who, what works best as politicians. It's about making sure that we are more inclusive and that more people are getting out and participating and that we support that. And that's what the bill is about. Um, glad to pass it. The other thing that I know that really truly disturbs people is how much money is being poured into elections and that we don't know who these people are and what they're really active. And that bothers everybody. Um, and so we did some work and, and tried to, at least we can't stop money from being, um, spent on elections because that's a First Amendment right. So we're not going to be able to cut off the money. But what we're trying to do is at least make it more transparent about who is it that's, that's spending this money? What are that, what is that whose vote? And then we come back to these voters and make decisions with that information. Um, so, um, and that's what we're trying to do is get more information to people, valid information to people about how, um, who's out there trying to influence their votes. Um, because, you know, that's what's important and that's what's important to democratic republic, uh, which we are. And which we are participating in this morning. And again, come back to, there should be a sense of, of satisfaction that you're sitting in this room now and, um, that we are having these discussions, that we're having record of these discussions. Um, and that we are keep trying to roll out the number of people that feel like they have a stake and that they matter to these discussions. And that's beauty of, of who we are and what we are as a community, as a state, as a country. And we have to keep that going and we have to keep it going in the civil way that we are this morning. So thanks all.
All right. Let's move on next to gun violence prevention and public safety issues. So what is the status of universal background checks and red flag proposals? And then what else is being done to address crime and etc.?
Thank you for this, for this question. Um, it's something that I keep hearing about a lot from, from people in the districts and across the state and across the nation. Um, you know, I, there were some silver linings of COVID, right? Man shootings went down, school shootings went down because kids weren't in school. We weren't at the movies. We weren't going to church. And now we're back with the vengeance.
That's a good one.
And I ran in 2018 as a mom demanding action. I have four children, three of whom are never even going to school. One is in preschool classes, home with, um, with us most of the time. And this is an emotional topic. And the House, in my first term in 2019, we did pass the universal criminal background checks and the red flag, um, the technical name is emergency risk protection orders, E R P L, um, which basically allows law enforcement and, um, the judicial, judicial branch to remove weapons from people who have made statements endanger to themselves or others. Um, people who might struggle with a mental health condition, um, that we can assist them and can get them the help that they need to avoid a terrible situation. So those bills are included in our House Public Safety Budget Bill this year. So I'm not exactly sure why we'll be debating that on the floor. I know it's an issue that people care a lot about. Um, and there is, there is some concern, um, from poor people here in Minnesota. How is, um, what I can tell you is that these proposals are supported by law enforcement all across the state. Um, our, our chief authors have done ongoing discussion and we made changes to the language year after year. And I'm really proud of the language that's going to be included in the Public Safety Budget Bill this year. Um, the other thing to consider is that these proposals, while perhaps not in Minnesota, across the nation are largely bipartisan. You know, we had Congress pass our first gun violence prevention package in decades just a couple of years ago, um, which was amazing to see. Does go far enough in the states, do have, um, the power to make some additional changes. We actually saw some really positive work in Florida, maybe time, um, in a, in a Republican trifecta down in Florida, um, after some of the, um, some of the incidents that happened there in school shootings there. So I think that we have a lot to be happy about. Um, that being said, we need to continue educating folks and making sure that, um, people are getting the, the training that they need. They're going to be handling weapons. They're going to be storing them, how to store them safely. Um, I do also want to touch on the, um, other things that are being done in the public safety arena. Um, you know, we had a, a unacceptable rise in car theft, um, auto theft, um, car jacking, et cetera. Um, we did not pass a public safety bill last year. That was one of the things that got left on the table in the negotiations with the Republican Senate. Um, but I actually had one of the very few public safety proposals that was passed and included because it went through the Department of Commerce. And the Commerce Bill was passed last year. So, um, we, I had, I asked for over a million dollars for, um, what's called a auto theft prevention library that's run through the Department of Commerce. It actually got funded at about $500,000. It was a start, right? Um, but basically what this library would do is allow state funds to be utilized to purchase, um, something called a bait car. Um, some other, other high tech equipment that different police departments across the state can basically rent out. They know if they're having, um, you know, different districts around the, the state don't have enough local funding to purchase one of these bait cars, they can put it out as like a, I don't know, what are the ones that may be stolen a lot lately? I had a Honda Civic stolen when I was back in college. So it was a Honda Civic or something. If you are like breaking them and stealing them, they can like borrow this Honda Civic and it has video cameras in it that they can put at the place where they think it's, you know, and then they can take action on people who are bad actors and trying to steal that car and then move into, um, um, and, you know, situations. So that was really exciting development that did happen last year. And like I said, this is more able to factor in public safety budgets. Um, but there's a lot of other amazing things in our existing public safety budget. Um, I'll highlight a couple. Um, we're funding additional rape kit exams. Um, that's been something in Minnesota that I, um, many of us have heard about that, that, um, rape kit for people who have sexually assaulted or raped and they went in and they, their kit was gathered, but then it was sitting on the shelf and not being tested. So we're helping, um, the department get the funding that they need to actually go through and test those. And, um, that's something that's really important, also a really emotional issue for survivors. Emergency radio grants, um, so that DPS can, um, help local government units, um, get uh, updated technology in radio so that they can keep in contact, um, with folks. There's a couple, um, great, uh, provisions for the Department of Corrections regarding incarceration and not re-release versus some of these policy proposals that don't cost any money, but are going to make a huge impact, um, on our public safety system. So there's a ton more that we can go into today and just know that, um, it's something that we all take very seriously and are certainly open to your input. Um, none of us actually sort of on the public safety committee. So without, um, being able to go into the nitty gritty today, I hope that's a good general overview.
All right.
Oh, yeah. Um, I, 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 we got more, we compiled your questions. I mean, every single one of you that submitted a question, and the most questions on both sides of the aisle, I would say probably came on this particular issue. So we hear you. I'm, the, the police union of the state of Minnesota endorsed three Democratic candidates out of 67, and I was one of them. Because of my views, I'm making sure police go to work and be able to kiss their wife or husband goodbye. When they go to work, make sure they're going to come home safe or things like that. And, um, but my view now, in my office, is of the Minnesota State Capitol. First six years I looked at a parking ramp. And I want to remind people that the Second Amendment begins with the words, "a well-regulated militia." There's not just these words that say the right of the people to keep their arms. There's another clause in the Second Amendment that said, basically, you have the right to have your arms regulated. And now that I have this view of the Capitol, I have to stare at those flags at half-mast after the last school shooting. And as a teacher, there's nothing that bums me out more than another school shooting. And I know we all say enough is enough and wanting to do something. And I don't know what to do. I, I sincerely, if anybody cares more than me about this issue, I'd love to meet you because I don't know if there is somebody out there more. The day of Parkland, I'm looking at my phone, Ms. Garmeyer, if any of you know who she is, um, text me and there was a smash shooting in Parkland, Florida, and I'm looking at it. text me, and there was a smash shooting in Parkland, Florida, and I'm looking at it. I'm sitting on the floor of the Senate, and a couple hours later, I found out that a former student of mine body-dug that morning and took his own life. And that's what we're facing as public officials. And we're trying to get it right, but ultimately, our kids are screaming. And they're screaming in silence, but they're screaming because we're just not keeping them safe. And boy, if anybody solves this issue of school safety, they're going to win the Nobel Peace Prize and Time Magazine's Person of the Year. So, that person could be used, so we could use your assistance.
Thank you, all right. With about 10 minutes left, we're going to move on to education and children and families. I'm going to designate about five or six minutes talking about education, just so we have another five or six minutes to go through some of the questions that were submitted today. I know we have the two education policy chairs sitting with us today. So, there's a lot of good things to talk about, but we're going to try and keep it five or six.
I'm going to go first. So, I think, to pick up on the discussion that we had before, one of the things that we've heard in our education system is the importance of addressing inequality for our students and for our teachers and our administrators. So, one of the big things that we do in the, you know, came through at the policy committees, but now is in finance committee is being funded, is to fund more counselors, social workers, getting into the schools. So, it is unprecedented where our kids are right now, and it's so well documented that there is a crisis. And so, when we talk about, you know, why we need more money for education, this is one of the needs, and kids are just trying not, saying, you know, I need help now. You can't say, oh, you know, five years from now, we'll get you some help. And all of the, you know, one of the, also, one of the major issues that every committee has been dealing with is workforce shortage. And if you're a business person right now, you know you're having trouble hiring people. Workforce shortages and for nurses, for nursing assistants, workforce shortages for every kind of physician and healthcare provider, workforce shortages for teachers, workforce shortages for psychologists and psychiatrists, and for trained counselors for schools. There aren't enough people right now. One reason there aren't enough people is because the work doesn't pay. So, we know we need to be there with this investment for our students right now. So, that is one of the issues that we're addressing in education. It's an area that we've fallen way, way behind in, and we can't afford it. And we have to start making changes now. We, there is, the other thing that I know that we have to talk about is teacher retirement. It's, when we talk about, this is a, it's a major, it's a major issue, and it's something that we keep kicking the can down the road and haven't addressed. But right now, teachers in Minnesota, their retirement age is the, one of the oldest retirement ages in the country. And if you're deciding if you want a career in teaching, if you decide, if you're deciding where you want to teach, one of the things you think about is, you know, what are the benefits? You know, and that's the big picture. And your retirement benefit is a big thing that teachers are thinking about, whether they stay in the profession, or if they're going to be entering the profession, and if they're choosing where to enter the profession. So, this teacher retirement is a workforce issue, you know, we're talking about when teachers can leave the workforce. So, it's, it's also a major cross because it's an ongoing cross. It turns out, teachers in Minnesota have lived the longest life expectancy in the country because they're such wonderful people, they live long. And because I think they've been sold out. So, as part of Minnesota's, we have a really good whole population in Minnesota that I am counting and hope to be around for a long time, too. So, right now, we have not, we have not set on the plan of what we can do to address the teacher retirement right now. But it is moved up on the list of issues from like, it wasn't something I was aware of before I started this year, and now I am so aware of it. But I, so I can't guarantee that we're going to solve it in this budget year. We're going to try to make progress on it and put it in a better position. And some of it is that we have one-time money, but one-time money doesn't pay for the long-term retirement of teachers. So, it's, it's a higher priority that it was a start, and we're moving quickly on it, and we're trying to get it to a good place going forward. And so, just even if you're not a teacher, if you didn't know this was an issue, it's an issue. And it's, it's big. So, that's a couple of the things. There's, I know some specific things that I can follow up with, especially if I have people's emails about policies that we're doing, where we are in literacy, where we are on civics, and financial literacy, and some of the other standards, academic standards that we're putting into our curriculum right now. So, that's a little bit on education, two of the big priorities.
Sign up for my newsletter if you want, she'll get it for you, break it, we'll get it for you. This is the education policy bill, this is the education finance bill. If you're interested, we can get you a copy, or she'll get you a copy. We're on line, right? No, you can't have these copies. But it's just been on, on one of two people, one of two senators, 67 senators that are both on education finance, education policy. It's where my Ash is, and those of you that don't know that, my newsletter is filled with anecdotes and things about our kids and whatnot. It's been a really good session because we heard from more kids and more teachers this session in hearings than I heard in my first six years. And, because I love when kids come and testify, because it's not only adorable, but they have a lot of wisdom to share. We have, the youngest testifier this year was a seven-year-old girl, and she was just amazing. I think she testified in the House, too, because she was so good. Anyways.
And then talk really briefly on some of our early childhood funding and addressing some of the challenges that we're having in the childcare industry. Issues just that won't quit, that were problems before the pandemic, and all the challenges there exacerbated everything. But our focus is really on getting every good son of a child off to a great start. We have, we're really making an increase in our budgets ongoing for children and families, which in my opinion, and in the data that we see in surveys and research over and over again, is that investment in the early childhood space is the best place for return on investment in terms of state dollars. So, we know that if children have a safe and healthy place to live, if they have food, or food on their lunch table at school, if they are getting high-quality education and care from the time that they're born, that comes back to the state in terms of special education costs. It comes back to the state in terms of juvenile, juvenile public safety challenges, mental health challenges, healthcare. So, a couple highlights here. We are increasing the childcare citizen's maximum rate, which means that childcare providers who accept childcare citizen from lower-income families are getting paid closer to what they deserve to be paid. We've had historic needs of a very low cap on what they're actually qualified to receive from the state. And it's actually a partially federally funded program. So, we can run through the counties here in Minnesota. We are increasing the basic sliding fee, which means that people who qualify for a variety of SNAP and M F and some of these other programs, we're just kind of reprioritizing it. Actually, Chair Priner was a lead on that particular issue. We are hoping to get a little bit more flexibility in terms of childcare staffing so that folks have the ability to begin working at a, at a level within a childcare center as they start getting, moving down the path to getting their degree, which we hope is going to really assist with retention. We know that the wages are untenable in all the care industries, whether it's PCA, whether it's nursing homes, whether it is childcare. And so, we're really working toward that. And I mean, I fear that until we can really make a bigger difference and impact in the wages that these people are able, that they're receiving, they're doing some of the most important work imaginable. Taking care of our little ones, taking care of our folks with disabilities, taking care of our elders who need the support at any given point of life. So, there's really amazing policy and really a great amount of funding for scholarships to make sure that people can access, more easily access, affordable and high-quality care for their kids so that they can get back to work. Because we know that we're still facing this workforce shortage. So, in my opinion, it's all connected, and I'm happy to talk offline about that part of our.
All right. We, I guess, with the stacked questions that have been submitted today, many of them were on topics that we haven't touched on today. And again, for more specific questions, we will follow up offline with more specific answers. I'm going to ask two questions together, and then just go down if anyone wants to say anything. And then, we're going to wrap up with a minute of closing, from each legislator. And then, I'm going to ask that we swiftly move out of this room so that the library is ready to set up for the next event to hear. So, thank you so much for understanding that I'm going to answer these two questions, and then we can move into closing statements. All right. Again, thank you to Rupatheeshu Wutun for leading the effort to cap small-dollar short-term loans to 36% in Minnesota, now in H I 2680 and S F 2044, the omnibus bills. Also funding our work at Exodus Funding on expanding access to small-dollar loans for financially, for financially excluded communities. Do others here support these efforts toward more predatory lending?
Yes.
All right, and then, I would most to using one-time money to fund ongoing programs that will be sustainable once the surplus goes away. Explain your rationale for using one-time money.
So, this is a, this is a hard question. It's just a hard situation. We have had a lot of one-time money that hasn't been utilized over the, over the past few years due to some additional support from the federal government. And really, some of these grants, well, our, you know, we've worked with the organization. We've seen the need that's there, and so we can give them some assistance. Some new programs, our pilot program. So, you know, we're assisting them to kind of get off the ground. We're going to look at the research coming back and see down the road if it makes, does it make sense for the state to continue supporting them in this effort? And for the most part, we've been very prescriptive about what, as I talked about earlier, kind of the budgeting process and where those numbers come from. Each committee chair is very prescriptive in the programming that does extend beyond these first couple of years for the next, for the next five years. So, I don't know if, or you're Steve, want to talk about your work in education specifically? I know that's a huge part of our budget and it's so critical for every district in the state, and that might be a good way to explain it.
I think that's an excellent example and an excellent point that's being raised of if it's an ongoing need, what could this one-time money, our education system, is the example of when we talk to our parents, when we talk to our school people, when we talk to teachers, they say, we can't use one-time money. We can't hire a teacher for one year or two years, and then their job is gone. What happens to those students? You know, what happens to that classroom that we just put together? So, when we put together these budgets, when we put together the target, there was a huge awareness of what needs to be ongoing funding and what could be a one-time money. Education is where we put the majority of our money for ongoing funding. And the, in legislature, we talk about the jails. So, basically, trailing behind us, that there's still money. Education is the budget that has ongoing because we will always have another group of kindergarteners. And we can't let those kids go. We will always have a group of first graders, we will always have a group of second graders, we will always have a group of third graders that are learning. And if we don't get them up to speed, with their speed by the time of their third grade, then their long-term future is bleak. So, these are, these are priorities for Minnesotans. And they need on-term, long-term money, and that's where our budget is, is in these kinds of long-term goals. Creating a road, that's perfect, let's do that. Let's invest in the infrastructure for wind, let's, for solar. Because that's one-time spending. We, ongoing maintenance, but one-time spending is the big one. So, it is, it is very much front and center. What makes sense to do with one-time, what has to be ongoing to really make a difference from now and into the future.
In very brief closing statements, if you'd also want to touch on what is on the agenda for the rest of the 2023 session and/or your top legislative priorities for session, we will go in any order of the four of you, and then we will wrap up.
So, what I would like to talk about, and actually, it's a couple of things. First of all, I wanted to thank the law enforcement who are here. It's kind of sad that we have to have all of them. It's been quite a, very cool conversation, and I'm glad we're able to be in person because I know some people are afraid to be in person. When I participated in the League of Women Voters Debate, I was the one there. One of my colleagues couldn't attend to get a call, but the others, you know, whatever, they didn't come. It's great to be in person and be able to see people. So, I appreciate you coming, and I appreciate my colleagues for being here. I've heard about the Kennedy family and how at supper time, they loved having debates. You know, that was their, the fun that they'd have at their dinner table would be debating. And I thought, well, that's, that's kind of what I like. My husband doesn't like that. So, we did go there. But, you know, it's great to be, this is democracy. We need to be able to free to express how we feel. There are people out there protesting, you know, that's great, I mean, that's what we want. We want to be able to freely protest. But we can't do that freely if we're afraid of being shocked. And so, I'm thankful for the law enforcement here who are supporting us and keeping this, keeping us safe in case anything happens. I think it's tough, it's a tough time. I was actually looking into memorial highways before I came today because I wanted to talk about what's happening this Friday. But when I was looking at the memorial highways, I was actually, it was sad to see a lot of our memorial highways are named after police officers. So, right now, we're looking at renaming Highway 5. And right now, it's the Augie Mueller Memorial Highway, named after a Republican representative who was born in Arlington, Minnesota, and died in Arlington, Minnesota. I think he served in the House of Representatives for 33 years, highly respected. I think of him as our Frank Horns, you know, if anyone knows you, Chair Frank Horns, and very highly regarded by both sides. But we named the highway after him, and now we're working on renaming a seven-house stretch for friends because of what friends have done for us. But when I was looking into the memorial highways, I saw there was one other place that had been given the exception, because most of our highways, we have a sign, memorial highways in brown. But we wanted to have, under some of the constraints, that we would love to have it in purple. So, it ended up was gracious enough to work with us, and that really had the only purple highway sign in the state. But there's a blue one, there was one other exception made, and that was of Exporous Lake, named after a police officer who died in the line of duty. And I looked at all the other memorial highways and how they were named after police officers who were shot in the line of duty. And I, and I keep thinking, you know, it's sad that we're not free and not to, you know, go to the movie theater or just take these things, but having to think about someone beating a man and, you know, going nuts. So, for our law enforcement, you know, I think we need gun regulation. You know, I know it is a controversial subject, but I think it's something we need to address. And this Friday is a seven-year anniversary of friends' death. And so, we will be on the House floor, hopefully not until 3:00 in the morning, but we will be debating a couple other legislate, legislation. Not sure what else we have, I think the mentions is also on the House floor that day. But this is seven-year anniversary, we've been talking about renaming that highway. I really look forward to hearing from more of you. I know we had trouble with getting responses back to people with our emails. Um, somehow we kind of lost them while we're working on it. You're free to come, welcome, uh, to, to come to my office at any time. So make an email and we'll do our best to communicate with you. But, you know, democracy is about as daring freely to discuss ideas, whether we agree or not. And so thank you for coming and participating in this great democracy that we have.
Finally, Susan, collecting remarks. Yeah, okay. Um, well, thank you for hosting, Representative Green. Um, we, we're, we're heading into the, into the closing session. And there's still changes that have been being made. It's still an open time for inputs. Um, lots, um, lots to do, um, and to get done. Uh, but, um, we are, education now has been, this year, um, is, has been my priority and, and, and that's where, where right now most of my work, the second being in human services. And when I talk about these workforce shortages, um, we are in a crisis right now. And I know that for most people, the crisis is invisible. Um, and that means that you're a fortunate person if you don't know, um, what's happening right now in our schools, university homes, in our care facilities, um, in our hospitals. Um, thank you nurses for hanging in there and still, still doing the work. Um, it's, it's, it's been hard. And there, these, these years, um, so many of us have faced something that we never thought we would have to face. Um, and there's some people that have, have kept showing up no matter what the personal cost for. Um, and we're trying to make up for that time that's been lost and to put ourselves in a better position for the future. Um, so, um, it's, it's, it's going to need all of us, all of us to participate, all of us to keep trying to understand what's going on in the street picture. Um, and that, but I think that we're, what we have in the legislature are the right people to do it. And I don't see it as maybe necessarily implying vocally on those big boards and you see green oats and red oats. And I said, no, this is just partisan. Um, but it's what happens to get us to those points. And the discussions that we've had in our committees, the discussions that we've had on the floor, the constituents that have been writing to us, the advocacy groups, um, there's, it's, it's a, it's a, it's a nice move. You know, you see just a little bit at the top, but the work that's been going on is underneath and it's been building over the years. Um, and I think that at the end of this, there's going to be a lot of grit that comes out of it for Minnesota to make even, uh, some of the challenges of the day, um, but also to put us into the position, um, for a future that we want. I am so excited that I would have been the John Scott when you get your signpost. And I'm going to be visiting. Um, I'm going to be on that Prince role looking for the criminal signs. I'm going to be ready to keep coming to town and doing it too. Um, and there are so many things to look forward to in Minnesota. I am one of the luckiest people in the world to be doing the work that I'm doing and the people that I'm doing it with, with the constituents that I've had, the ones that disagree with me. I have to find that time and keep writing. I know that was my one. Um, and, you know, our colleagues, um, the, the staff people that are here and then I, I, they're, they're doing, they are doing such great work and all of this season. Um, so, um, thank you for coming today, um, for being a part of this, for being an active and engaged audience. I can see it in your faces and your body language. Even if it's okay. Um, this is, this has been really ridiculous and, um, knowing that it's, and also that they can, that the discussion is continuous and that we're gonna, we're gonna get to the end of this and there's going to be good things for every person in Minnesota at the end of this session and the next session coming.
Well, it's been amazing to be here with all of you today. Uh, again, so much fun to do this job in person. Um, not everybody loves door knocking. I love door knocking, uh, so it's always amazing when people actually answer the door. And, uh, and I'm hopeful to do some off, off-season, off-year door knocking this year to talk about all the amazing work that we're doing, um, at, at between now and the end of session. And really setting the pace for the future of the state of Minnesota in all of these really critical areas. Um, in terms of legislative priorities for me, um, paid family and medical leave is one of my top priorities. Um, I've been, I've been talking about this since 2018. Um, it's something that I've been passionate about even prior to that, prior to running for the legislature. Um, and I've, you know, had a lot of conversations with small business owners. We've had, there's been a lot of change in the language from, I think it was, maybe initially introduced in the 2016 legislative session before I was even in office. Um, but we made consistent changes, um, working with business groups, really trying to, to tighten, um, the language and make sure that the program is financially stable before we even kick it off. So we're making a ceded investment. We're one of the very few states that is, that is applying, um, one-time upfront money to get the program running to, to help it, um, hopefully, you know, maintain that, um, solvency. So I'm really excited about that. Um, additionally, you know, you know, there's a lot of topics that we weren't able to discuss today and, well, the library has been figured out because of, um, additional time. Hopefully a couple of us can gather, um, outside and then continue the, the settled discussion. But, um, most of you know that I was the chief author of the PRO Act, um, for protecting reproductive rights. Um, that was my top issue. That was my top campaign issue. It was loud and proud on every single piece of mail that you received from my campaign. Um, I am extremely proud of the language that I completely included in that bill to ensure that every Minnesotan has bodily autonomy and that people who don't look like us, who don't worship like we do, who, um, you know, those people don't get to make those decisions for us as a individual. So that's something that we can disagree on, um, but it's something that I'm really proud of. And, um, and I know that the vast majority of Minnesotans, the vast majority of people in our district and across the country is that people should have bodily autonomy to make decisions about their own welfare. And, um, that's where I'm going to end it, but we continue that competition on Friday.
So thanks for being here today. Um, I just want to, um, you know, the reason we're all here is to leave this world a better place. And that's what all of us believe. That's what, um, and I want to thank you to, for giving up an hour and a half of the most precious thing we all possess, our life. Um, so thank you for all for, um, I mean, your time, um, your time. Um, your, the most precious thing we all possess is the time that we have on this planet. So thanks for dedicating it out and advocating it all. Thanks for listening, Representative Lee. Um, wherever that comes, so there I am. And, um, so I just had the pleasure and honor of, of working with these two and now Lucy joined us and, um, you're a very lucky, lucky man. And I know that. And I can't thank you enough. I want, I just want to shout out, um, I know, um, Representative Prior acknowledged, um, the staff today, but they don't, they're not getting paid. They didn't have to be here. Some of them drove far. Um, so if you guys could just shout out who you are and introduce yourself. So yell your name.
Hi, I'm Ella. I'm Representative Teague's assistant. Thank you all for coming today. Really appreciate it.
Yell your names.
Hi there, Representative Green.
I'm Reagan. I'm Senator Susan Kudala.
If you guys want to acknowledge, um, Representative, um, I think it's a very great thing, sincerely, which how she handed her remarks, um, given everything. So I just want to thank her for that, her courage. And so anyways, with that said, yeah, yeah. Um, thank you all for being here today. And, um, again, thank you, and I'll be around. Um, and so thanks again for everything.
Thank you for coming and, um, for seeing here today. I just have a last few comments. Um, if you can wait your way outside, kind of clean up your room quickly. And then, um, we can still submit questions on the outside that we will respond to after. Um, it is for revenue, isn't it? And I just have a few things, um, that we asked, thank you. Yep, and, um, if, and I would like to help stack some chairs. If you can do, um, my, 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 my.